Okay, let's move on to consider approval of the city's stand on fracking. I did ask, you know, I'm sorry you didn't get notice, I asked the city clerk or somebody to call you, you know, to give you 10 minutes along, after you're done, I'll give Chris 10. But, you know.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, members of the council. My name is Andy Shaw Coron. You know that because I've addressed you quite a few times over the last year in regard to both fracking and renewable energy issues, Model Green City, so we've had a lot of time together. I had not originally planned on 10 minutes, but I, and I probably won't do 10 minutes right now, but we came to you to ask you to take a stand on the issue of Measure J. And Measure J, the initiative to ban fracking, cyclic steam injection, and matrix acidizing, has turned out to be the most engaging issue in this county in many, many years. I've talked to folks, and I've lived here 28 years, but I've talked to folks who've been involved in the political life of this county for 40 or 50 years, and they can't remember an issue that involve people as much as this one has. And there's good reason for it to involve people as much as it has, because it really presents us a crossroads about the future of the county, about what our development, what the vision for our county will be. And we were concerned, and you know about, you know, the concerns about fracking, I'm not going to go over all the concerns about fracking again, because there's been so much in the newspapers and so much you can read about fracking, and about cyclic steam injection, and about acidizing. I'll say a few things, since fracking is, you know, a lot more covered than the other issues. The other types of what we call tertiary or enhanced extraction methods also have their risks. As a matter of fact, the cyclic steam injection has enough risks that a judge basically turned around and said that the project down by Pinnacles National Park had to be stopped, and there had to go through a much more substantial environmental impact review. In that area, that project, so I'll say a little bit about that, because that's probably the biggest project that this initiative would affect. There's that, there's a plan for 1,000 wells in the long term down by Pinnacles National Park. It's in an area where there's a shallow aquifer, a shallow deposit, and Chevron's own engineers have said that cyclic steam wells have a higher rate of failure than other wells, upwards of 19 percent, get compromised. Now imagine 1,000 wells going through a shallow aquifer with 19 percent of them having the potential for being compromised. That's 190 wells that could potentially be avenues for fluids to get into that shallow aquifer. It has enough concern that the owner of the property where that project is happening, Charlie Hinkel, has endorsed us and sent us $1,000. It may have seen in the news that 80,000 gallons of produced water was put back into those wells. And that, the complaint was made to Dogger. We read that it's a violation of Dogger's regulations and a violation of what the county said they were allowed to do on that project. And that raises a big concern about all of these kinds of projects and what they might do to aquifers. Okay, so, that's cyclic steam injection. Another red herring you'll probably hear some more about this evening is the issue of acidizing. And some people have made the false comparison, saying that our initiative would stop people from doing the routine kinds of cleaning of wells, whether they be oil wells or water wells, that removes the buildup of scale in the wells. Dogger has a white paper about that. They make it very clear that that kind of treatment of wells is not the same thing as matrix acidizing, and our initiative would not ban that kind of routine maintenance. So, you know, people have been worried, raised that issue around, it's a red herring. And that seems to be part and parcel of this whole argument. Early on, we were told that our initiative banned all oil drilling in the county, and the planning director had to set the record straight on that, that was set straight in the pinnacle, in the freelance, that, no, our initiative would allow for conventional oil drilling in about 90 to 95 percent of the county, in the ranch and range land. So we've seen a series of arguments presented against Measure J, and then amplified by the biggest media payout that has ever been seen in our county. You may or may not know, but our opponents have spent, have $1.9 million in their campaign, which is approximately $75 per every registered voter in our county. We've done pretty well, we've raised about 120,000, which is pretty big by San Benito County standards, that comes out to $4 or $5 per voter. So, this initiative, we could use your help on this, because it's hard to get past the television commercials and the kind of, you know, inundation that people have had around this issue. And your elected representatives, you know, you have a responsibility to look out for the people in this county. So, the, I was going to say, to endorse this initiative would be to show that folks who've actually thought about this quite a bit this year have taken a stand on the issue, and taken a stand with what I believe is the public in this county. 4,180 people in our county signed a petition to put that. There would have been much more, we tried to do it, we did that all in four weeks, so it was probably record-breaking that we got that many signatures. We've been in every neighborhood, knocking on doors, and the response is overwhelming on our side, that this is the right thing to do. But the other side has created a great deal of confusion. First, they adopted our motto, protect San Benito County, and we wondered, how is this protecting San Benito County to expand the oil industry into dangerous drilling methods? Now, the latest, there are new big signs out there that say, "It goes too far." And I would say, it's just right. It allows what we've always had in this county, conventional oil drilling, to continue, as long as that kind of drilling can continue. But it prohibits the kind of methods that have proven in other places to have a higher risk of contaminating what is the most precious resource in our county right now, besides our people, which is our groundwater. And you all know that here in San Juan Batista. You've been forced to look into getting a new well north of the city. Think about the fact that there's a, that there's another oil field just north of our county line. It has a wastewater injection well. What would have happened if that system over there contaminated the groundwater, and you couldn't go north of the city to find new sources of clean water? What would it mean to the city? Look out at Kern County, where they now have shut down a number of wastewater injection wells associated with the oil drilling industry, because they found signs of contamination in the surrounding agricultural wells. The issue that most people in this county are having to grasp is that you can't have it all. You have to make hard decisions, and we hope that you'll help us pass this decision and endorse Measure J. And I think that's enough for this evening. Thank you.
Again, before we move on with-
Do you have any questions?
No, but we know where you're at, right here. Before we, Christine's going to come up and represent the other side and set up. Would, everybody who wants to speak, make sure you get a speaker card in, you know, start putting them in, so we can, when we get going, I can call on the public. I don't have any, is there any questions right now? Okay, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Christine, you want to come up?
I don't really need to set up, unfortunately, we didn't, weren't set up for PowerPoint, so I've provided copies to everyone on the dais, and I have left my flash drive with staff, in the event that anybody in the audience or within the public would like to receive copies. Mayor Moore, members of council, staff, neighbors, friends, my name is Christina Chavez Wyatt. I'm a small business owner, I own a micro-business, own and operate farmhouse communications here in Hollister, and I conduct community engagement for public and private organizations. I'm a contract executive director for the San Benito County Business Council, and I'm also working with San Benito United for Energy Independence. I'm a proud member of the Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, Farm Bureau, California Women for Agriculture, and I work with those organizations to work with communities to get them to understand where their food, fiber, and fuel comes from. I was appointed by the governor to the 33rd Aggrisic to the Fairborn in July, and have been very proud to serve our community there. I'm proud to have graduated with Gavlin, from Gavlin College, with two associate's degrees, one in liberal studies and other in biological science, and put myself through school, went to Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, got my degree in agriculture from the Division of Natural Resource Management and Commercial Tourism Management, with emphasis on ecotourism and destination marketing. I'm proud to be a wife of a farmer, a wine grape grower, and very glad that we're done with our harvest season, it was a really great season. I'm a mom to three-year-old twins, and we're looking to continue living here as we have. My family's been here for 30 years, and I'm proud to be a fifth-generation Californian. So with that, digging into some of the details here. Again, I'm working with San Benito United for Energy Independence, and our goal is supporting continued domestic oil production while protecting the environment and addressing the concerns of local communities. And I think it's important in this discussion is to talk about where energy comes from here in California. Currently, our energy portfolio is 75 percent petroleum, which is petroleum and natural gas, oil and natural gas, and the rest is imported interstate electricity, thankfully a good and growing renewable energy portfolio, and then also a little bit of hydroelectric and a little bit of nuclear. And where that energy is used, majority is transportation. We have a lot of tourism here, we have a lot of agriculture here, and we need to be able to move our trucks, move our cars, and get people throughout California and throughout the United States. The remainder is industrial, residential, commercial, and electric power. Again, as we also know in agriculture, especially with our large cooling plants, it takes a lot of energy to make sure that our food maintains the coal chain, and we provide good bag salads and cartons to our communities. And while California is the third-highest producer of oil and gas in the United States, everything that we drill here only covers 37 percent of our need. So the remaining 63 percent are imported from foreign countries and other states, including Saudi Arabia at 30 percent, Ecuador 22 percent, and Iraq at 18 percent. And these are, these are countries and areas where, where areas of conflict, where they don't have environmental protections, nor do they have worker protections. And I'd like to quote one of my mentors, former U.S. Secretary of Defense, Leon Panetta, who said, "The key components of a secure nation include education, a growing middle class, and energy independence." It's also very important to note where oil production is here in the county. We only have 26 active wells, and they're currently in the Viasitas Oil Field, which is in Pinocchio, right on the Fresno County line. The other proposed oil, active oil field, as Mr. Shaw Coron referred to, is Project Indian, which is on the Spur Ranch, and that is about 20 minutes from Pinnacles National Park in road miles, six miles from Pinnacles National Park in, as the crow flies, it takes about a half hour from Highway 25 to actually get to the oil field. So it's right on the foothills on the other side of Monterey County, Greenfield is on the other side. Regarding steam injection and the Citadel proposal, they have engaged in environmental impact report process for their full production facility. They received a conditional use permit and a cursory environmental review for their exploratory wells, but now they've done their exploratory wells, they're doing a one-year environmental impact report at their cost of $200,000. It's going to take about a year. And also regarding steam injection in California, about 60 percent of our wells in California are estimated to be utilizing steam injection, and have been since at least 1962 safely. I was concerned regarding some of the issues that Mr. Shaw Coron brought up regarding proposed well failures regarding steam injections, so I called the Division of Oil and Gas Public Information Office, and found that there was no findings or evidence to support the 19 percent fail rate. And also to look at the concerns of Mr. Hinkel, who is the property owner and doesn't own the mineral rights on his property. Mr. Hinkel, the fact is, he's an oil man, he doesn't have the mineral rights on his property, but he drills for oil and gas throughout the state of California. We found here in San Benito County that oil and gas operations have been a compatible use for about 150 years. Our current oil and gas wells, and those are proposed, are very far away from residential areas, and they're compatible use with other uses of land, including cattle ranching and agriculture and open space. For example, a good example of steam injection is in the San Ardo Oil Field, which is in the far south of Monterey County. That oil field, just the two producers alone, are the largest property taxpayer of Monterey County, more than Pebble Beach Company, more than Northridge Mall, et cetera, and a valuable provider of thousands of jobs to that community. Within that oil field also, they grow wine grapes, walnuts, potatoes, and they also generate clean water. The oil field actually runs, has the Salinas River running through it, never had an issue of contamination, although they've been operating there since 1947. And what they're able to do is take, majority of what you pull from an oil field is water, it's saltwater. And what they do through reverse osmosis is they clean it to a tune of nine barrels of water for every barrel of oil they pull out, and they're able to clean that water, re-mineralize it, and percolate it into the Salinas River aquifer 2,400 acre feet a year. That's 780 million gallons of fresh clean water that was otherwise buried hundreds of feet under the ground. And that's clean and safe enough, where the farmers and ranchers, including the Monterey County Farm Bureau, are very happy to have that water, and supporting the $4 billion worth of agricultural value that they have there. Oil and gas is regulated by seven, more than 17 state and federal and local organizations, including the California Department of Conservation and under the Division of Oil and Gas and Geothermal Resources, under the leadership of Director John Laird out of Santa Cruz and Abbott Environmentalists. Other regulation of oil and gas is included in the presentation is San Benito County that passed a 21-page oil and gas ordinance over last year, including environmental groups, mineral rights owners, members from the industry, et cetera. That took nine months to broker that ordinance, and it provides additional protections for the land use perspective, besides California passed Senate Bill 4 in 2013, and that the rules and protections involved in Senate Bill 4 actually went into place on January 1st. That bill had received overwhelming bipartisan support, including Senator Canela and Assembly Member O'Leah, both who do not support Measure J. It includes a comprehensive, objective environmental impact report, mandatory disclosure and noticing, including all chemicals used, as of January 1st, any chemicals and as much of water that you do use in any areas that you're looking to utilize well injection or well stimulation are disclosed on two websites. One is the Division of Oil and Gas and Geothermal Resources, and the other is fracfocus.org. It also includes groundwater monitoring before, during, and after well stimulation treatments. Additional amendments were also released this summer, including bilingual noticing, additional information sharing, no more trade secrets, and seismic network evaluation and earthquake monitoring before, during, and after any kind of treatments. One of the reasons why the moratorium did not pass, although it was a heavy issue here at the state of California, is that in addition to a lack of science and findings of concerns regarding environmental issues, is that industry contribution to the state economy is $131.48 billion, and that money goes towards education, public safety, infrastructure, health and human services, labor and workforce development, natural resources, and environmental protection. It's one of the reasons why there's steadfast support for continuing oil production and natural gas production, and also moving forward with renewable energy. I do want to address some concerns regarding hydraulic fracturing that has been brought forth in our community. One is the amount of water that's used for hydraulic fracturing. When you fracture a well, it's a one-time well stimulation and completion treatment. It only happens once over a couple hours or a couple days. The amount of water that's used is actually half of an acre foot, which is about half of what it takes to water a golf course in one day, or about a fifth of the size of a swimming pool. The total amount of water that was used to fracture the 830 wells that were stimulated in 2013 in the state of California, which were done in Kern County and Ventura County, where the geology is most appropriate for that type of treatment, was 323 acre feet, which was less than what it took to water golf courses in half of a day. So the total percentage of water used for hydraulic fracturing in California was .0005 percent, 78 percent was for agriculture. I'd like to bring up a couple quotes. One is from the Deputy Secretary of the U.S. Department of Interior. "We find no evidence to suggest that hydraulic fracturing itself has caused an increased rate of earthquakes." Another one from the California Department of Conservation. "There is no reported damage to the environment as a result of hydraulic fracturing." Another from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. "There's little or no risk of fracturing, fracture fluid contaminating underground sources during hydraulic fracturing." And I also want to bring forth an important quote from Catherine Phillips from the Sierra Club, another proponent of Measure J, is even if, even if we don't get a moratorium or a ban, the threat of it discourages investment in communities, which is very concerning to me. I did do some research regarding the city's policy regarding oil and gas operations, and did find in your general plan update, Objective LU 2.7, that prohibits land use for or in support of oil gas exploration or development. Also, in addition, is encouraging the County of San Benito to regulate land use within the city's sphere of influence and planning area boundary, consistent with LU 2.7.1. So no industrial land use, including oil and gas exploration, within your city limits or within your sphere of influence. It's also important to know what other cities in our region are saying about hydraulic fracturing and the other techniques, including steam injection and acidization. And I did include in my presentation, and within the packet that was circulated to you, I believe, on Friday, was there were unanimous resolutions passed by King City and Greenfield in asking that Monterey County take no further action regarding further regulation of oil and gas operations because of the value, both to the environment, but also to the communities that they support. I do think it's important that we also look at Measure J.
Christine, could you just kind of, I'm trying to keep everything fair here, throughout a 12 minutes, so just maybe summarize, and then we can get rolling.
Measure J is a 10-page general plan amendment. It's not just about banning fracking. And as we know, as the proponents of this measure know, hydraulic fracturing or fracking is not used, planned, or proposed in our community. It eliminates good jobs, it goes too far, and as Supervisor Marjorie Bartelsa said, if Measure J passes, it would go down in its history, is the biggest mistake that the county has ever made, and she can articulate that point. I also wanted to conclude with the fact that Measure J is environmentally counterproductive, because we have to look at what would replace oil and gas in California if production is concluded, which includes importing it by tankers, by railcar, and also imposing rationing. We also know that Measure J is opposed by people that we know and re-trust, including more than 104 individuals that are listed in your presentation, led by the Monterey County Farm Bureau, the Cattlemen, the Cattlewomen's Associations, the Chamber of Commerce, California Women for Agriculture. Our campaign is fully financed by energy companies who produce gas, oil, jobs, and pay taxes, and we're very happy that we don't have to raise money for our working families on this issue that has been thrown at our community. And we're feeling that we need to defend ourselves. We also feel that it's important that people get informed by using the facts, by going to third-party respected and neutral authorities, including organizations and information I've provided you in your packet, including the economic impacts, and us also environmental impacts, because there is no evidence to prove that hydraulic fracturing has caused environmental issues or environmental harm here in California, but issues like Measure J are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine. Is there any question for the council, before she sits down? Okay, thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
What I'm going to do is open it for public hearing. Everybody, please have a card, I'm going to limit you three minutes, and, probably got some speakers, and then, so, Chris, go ahead and-
John.
Paul Pass.
Richard Bianchi.
Thank you very much for the time. Just a point of clarification, 7-1 in the bottom of the eighth.
Yeah. We'll give you an extra minute.
As you know, my name is Richard Bianchi, I'm president of San Benito County Farm Bureau, and it's no secret Farm Bureau came out opposed to Measure J early on. As you've been told, there's no fracking in San Benito County, there's no secret about that either. One thing I will agree with one of the previous speakers, this is probably one of the most controversial issues, probably since, if you remember Measure G. And Farm Bureau came out opposed to Measure G, and oddly enough, we've come out opposed to Measure J as same as Measure G. And for Farm Bureau, it's real simple, it's about property rights. You're limiting property owners' right to do what they want without any, or what they want, what they would like, or what they would need to do to preserve their land, without even sound science. And everything that, you know, everything that I've seen, I've had conversations with people that said, "Oh, no, we have the science," and, you know, it doesn't seem to produce itself. You know, Farm Bureau, being a Farm Bureau, one of our, one of our two crusades, or one of our services we provide to our membership is helping them work through the agwafer process and preserving their groundwater. So that's about the most important to farmers. If anybody thought for a moment that we don't appreciate our water, that we live by our water, we can, you know, it was alluded to Monterey County. If you don't think that anybody in northern Monterey County would be worried about the oil wells in the south, I think every one of them would be, because of the agriculture that's there. Having conversations, looking at the news, nobody's climbing. So to say that we're going to have failing wells is a bit of a reach. The, being in Region 5 for the Regional Water Quality Control Board, we're dealing with a host of water quality issues, as I'm sure you people have, I've seen the water issues that San Juan's had. But none of, none of reason, none of Region 5's constituents that they're talking about that are contaminating the groundwater have anything to do with the oil industry. So the water argument seems to be a little bit unfounded in this case. You know, so Farm Bureau is, you know, is all about water, all about property rights. So I appreciate the, appreciate the time.
Next speaker, please.
Brad Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Brad Sullivan, I was asked by my law partner, Paul Rebella, this week tonight. Paul has two sick daughters and a wife that was not quite home yet, I guess she was stuck in that drive. So he got me off the practice football field at Hollister High, getting ready for Seaside, because we wanted to talk about two things tonight. There is going to be two lawsuits that are going to come out of this instantly, and I was sitting here trying to understand, why would that be relevant to the city of San Juan Batista? And it became very clear as I was sitting here and I was hearing you talk about environmental health, because of this fire and the potential impacts there. The fire department that the city of Hollister and the county and everyone's working together, a main part of that is the money that the county had been paying to CAL FIRE, is making it better for everybody, the two cities especially. The county is going to be in a situation where they have to defend two lawsuits, one from the state saying this is irrelevant, and it's preempted by state law, the other one is by the home, or the landowners, the owners of the property rights for takings. The county is already taking steps to take that from the hundreds of millions to maybe the low hundreds of millions by setting their amortization time, which means, as you as city council know, when you have a use that's been grandfathered in and you discontinue it, you may have to pay damages, so you try to limit those by providing a period of time to do it. Now normally, when you have a developer or a proponent coming, you make them pay your legal fees. legal fees. The people who signed these petitions and the people who promoted it are not going to be paying the hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees per month to defend the legality, the constitutionality of this. And I think that is clear from the actions of the Board of Supervisors today in trying to lower the amount of money that they will have to pay in damages of this by passing ordinances. But it's also clear that although some of the individual members, and there may even be a majority of the supervisors, have professed support for this, they didn't. They had an opportunity when the promoters brought the initiative to the board to make it the law of the county. They declined. So I would be asking you to really think hard the impact to your city that's going to come about if the county ends up filing a law or having to defend a lawsuit. The city of Hermosa Beach paid over, or got a $100 million loan from the state of California to pay their property rights takings cases because of a citizens' rights action, and that's a lot of money, and I don't think anyone in this county can afford that.
Thank you. Next speaker, card, please.
Maureen Ruck.
Live and Die by Water. My name is Maureen Ruck, and I'm a member of California, Monterey County, and San Benito County for Energy Independence. I'm also a development consultant. I consult with oil, gas, and minerals. I have to tell you, I want to tell you something about cyclic steaming. This gentleman has it wrong. 19% fail rate, nobody would be using it. That's too costly. So let me tell you something about cyclic steaming. Cyclical steaming gives 2,000 acre feet of water every year back to the Salinas River out of the San Ardo field, okay? That water is otherwise not available. There isn't a person in this room or in this county that wants to go out and try to get that water because you have to drill for oil to get that water. 90% of what comes up is water, 10% is oil. They split it. Water goes this way, oil goes that way. Part of that water goes back down, it's cleaned, it goes back down and allows for that steam. Goes through a generator, gets hot, and as we, goes back down into the ground and is reused over and over. Part of the water goes through a patented double RO process. Patented, okay? And they're using this more and more in fields. That water is cleaned, then it goes out to some ponds, and it sits for a couple of days in these clay-layered ponds because it's distilled water, then it has to naturalize. Once it goes through there, then it goes to another set of ponds, and it actually percolates back down into the Salinas River aquifer. Oil, him saying cyclic steaming, you're throwing out the baby with bathwater. Cyclical steaming adds water, and in this kind of a drought, who wants to throw that water out? That water is precious to the farmers in Salinas. It's also precious to the farmers in Kern County. And by the way, talking about the cease and desist order in Kern County, there's been no resolution to that. It does not appear, it was in caution of abundance because of the drought, that they asked for cease and desist order for everybody to stop injecting so that they could analyze if there were going to be any impacts because water purveyors are going deeper and deeper and deeper. So the cease and desist order was literally to just have everybody stop, step back, and take a look and see. So far, the resolution has been no pollution has occurred. So let's really talk about cyclic steaming, and Measure J throws that right out with fracking and everything else that's going on or isn't going on here in San Benito County. Fracking's not going on here in San Benito County or Monterey County. Cyclical steaming will give you back a considerable amount of distilled water, very, very, very clean water for ag and other uses. So I don't know that you want to throw that out, okay? So please, think twice about this. Thank you.
Next speaker, card.
Chris Marterana.
Hi, Chris Marterana, 97 Fourth Street. I live here in town, as do all of you, and in my driving around town, I see lots and lots and lots and lots of signs covering this issue. I cannot think, I can think of one "No on J" sign within the city limits. There may be more, but I can only think of one. There are four on the block, yes-on-J signs on the block of Fourth Street that I live on. It's very, very, very clear to all of us what the citizens of San Juan Batista want to happen here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Chris. Next speaker, card, please.
Dr. Marvin Jones.
Dr. Marvin? Dr. Marvin?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, Marvin Jones from Hollister. Got very little to add above what's already been said. The geology of San Benito County, with all of its faults, faults, discontinuities, it's not conducive to the horizontal drilling that you need to have viable fracking. It just won't go there. Also, Mr. Sullivan alluded to the potential cost of the violation of the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, the taking clause, without compensation. I don't think anyone is going to indemnify San Benito County for the legal fees. And if and when this ever gets resolved in the courts, if there's any actual awards for taking of oil, it's going to be expensive, and it's going to be us taxpayers that will end up paying for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next speaker, card, please.
Andy Chakram and then Mary Chakram.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live between here and Aromas. The reason I wanted to speak today is to just point out that for our county, the average citizen, there's very little benefit to allow, you know, the oil companies to come in and start doing the enhanced extreme extraction techniques like fracking, cyclic steam, and acidizing. It's true, we do have an existing oil industry, but they're using conventional drilling that's not going to be affected. What we are objecting to, the supporters of Measure J, are the more risky techniques that are moving north. They're already being used in Colinga, just as south of us, in Fresno County, further south in Kern County and San Ardo. What we're trying to do is sort of staunch this technology that's moving into our counties already started, near the Pinnacles, the Citadel Project, the cyclic steam injection. I just want to address, so anyway, just to go back to the risks, I think that there's a lot of risk here. There's not much benefit to the average citizen in this county, and the benefits really go to the oil companies. To take on the risk, you know, to become like a Colinga in our area is, I think, not advisable. They talk about the economic benefits, but Colinga's a very poor community. They have a lot of oil. If you look up Wikipedia, Colinga, they have higher poverty rate than the rest of the state. So oil has not really helped the average citizen. I don't think it will really help our community. I think our future is really in tourism and agriculture. And in Kern County, the use of water by the oil industry there, and a lot of it is cyclic steam, some of it is fracking, they have found that the farmers are not getting as much water because they're often outcompeted by the oil industry. So there is a competition between these two industries. It's not that compatible. And certainly with tourism, if we have a massive oil field, this is 1,000 oil wells outside of Pinnacles, it was in the recent Farm Bureau report, that also would, you know, jeopardize our tourism economy. So we have to think about, you know, the trade-offs here. Does it really benefit our community to become like Colinga? Would we lose tourism and jeopardize our agriculture industry? I also want to quickly address the cyclic steam injection wastewater. You know, the recycling that's being done in San Ardo, a lot of that is for show. The reverse osmosis is very expensive. They cannot do that for all the produced water, the wastewater. They have, if you look up in the Dogger reports, they have many wastewater injection wells. That's dispose of most of that water because it costs so much to do reverse osmosis. Regarding the takings issue, which the attorney here for the oil industry has mentioned, Measure J contains a lot of exemptions to protect the county from takings, and those exemptions, we think, will make it so that it's much more defensible. The ballot measure has been, you know, uses language that really just talks about using zoning and land use. It's based on the fact that this state has, is a home rule state. Local jurisdictions like our county are allowed to use zoning and land use to regulate activities like heavy industry, like oil and gas. And in states like New York, another home rule state, the courts have upheld again and again, you know, the right of local communities to ban fracking. There were 200 communities in New York that banned fracking or had a moratorium, and just this summer, their highest court ruled that they were allowed to do that. And so, in the case of New York, the gas industry has repeatedly lost. So I just wanted to clarify those points. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, card.
Supervisor Marjorie Bardot.
Hello, ma'am.
I thought that was you out there.
That was me. But I want to make it clear, first of all, that I'm not here representing the Board of Supervisors. I'm here as an individual supervisor, and actually, I'm in the minority because I was the only one on the board that opposed Measure J. I believe that some of them are really now rethinking their decisions after all the information that is coming out and the facts that are before us now. The measure's going to cost San Benito County millions upon millions of dollars, and I will tell you why. I'm going to read to you the county council's impartial analysis of Measure J. Our county council wrote this. The initiative states that the county shall take all steps reasonably necessary to enforce and defend the initiative against any challenge. Folks, that is wide open. There's no limit to the amount of money that is going to be spent in order to defend this initiative. And the property owners that are going to be affected by this, they're not going to sit back. They're not going to sit back and let extreme environmentalists come in and dictate what they can and cannot do with their constitutional rights that are going to be taken away. There is no fracking in San Benito County. There's no plan to frac in San Benito County. Our hands actually are going to be tied. They're going to be tied because we're not going to be able to gain our own energy independence. It's wrong. It's extreme. There's no proof that earthquakes are caused by fracking. There's no proof that there has been water contamination. We've been doing oil extraction for over 100 years, and it's been working. There has never been any sign that contamination has been as a cause of those extractions. Some people fault me for saying that I believe that these are scare tactics, but you know what? I really firmly believe that they are. Just the way that we were scared into thinking that BLM property had to be closed at Clear Creek because of an emergency situation when there was no proof, nobody had reported any kind of illness, that's the same thing that's happening here. There is no proof. And because it's been used for over 100 years that we've been extracting oil with no activity, earthquake, or contamination, I believe that these scare tactics are going to cause folks to become confused. And if you see a lot of signs, it's because people really don't understand it. They're scared. They haven't really been explained what this measure really is. If Measure J passes, it will go down in history, and I will say this again, Christina mentioned it, I said it at a board meeting, it's going to be the biggest mistake that this county has ever made because not only will it affect the property rights, it'll also affect the economy, and it'll affect oil independence for Americans. And the list is really long. There's a lot more that is going to affect us in a very negative way. So the only way that we can avoid risk is to vote no on Measure J, and that's the position that I'm going to continue to take. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marjorie. I might have a question down the road, you know, that you may want to, I'll ask you a question when it comes to, don't leave. Next speaker, card.
There are no other speakers.
Is there, okay, is there anybody that, oh, Joe, come on up. Please fill out a card. I'm going to give everybody an opportunity, and then I'm going to close it, and that's going to be it, and then we'll bring it back to the council. So if there's anybody else, go on, card. You did?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you'll be next. Well, he can go. He'll be next.
Do you have to, Ms. Morris?
Okay, Joe.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to address you and in regard to this particular issue. This Measure J is about oil extraction, but it is also about local power. And it is absolutely astonishing that a local lawyer and the Cattlemen Association would come and, you know, deliver what amounts to a threat to the county and to the city council, a threat from the oil companies that if you pass what you think is the right thing to do for your county, we're going to sue you. What red-blooded American would sit back and say, okay, I guess we're not going to do what we want to do. We don't think it's right, therefore, or we think it's right, but the oil companies are going to sue us, so we're going to back off? That is absolutely unjustified thinking, in my view. Energy independence. There is no energy independence when you are connected to a world commodity market. It's a nonsensical term. You want energy independence, you have to extract yourself from the marketplace so that you control your own market. There are ways of doing this, but you can't do it if you're buying and selling from oil companies. They are not charitable organizations. They are not going to take care of the United States of America if a market somewhere else pays them the money to go somewhere else with their oil or the gas. The EPA says there's no evidence. Every day in the newspaper, you can find evidence that there are problems with cyclic steam, fracking, matrix acidizing. In California, right across in Bakersfield, last week, two weeks ago, there was an article about farmers suing oil companies. Why? Because their farm water, their ag water has been polluted, their ag production is lowered because of alleged contaminant contamination. Where this will play out, we don't really know, but that the EPA would say there is no evidence would lead me to believe that I can't trust the EPA. They are not going to defend my interest in my block. Property rights. There's no taking of property rights. Speculators who bought the mineral rights in the Bitterwater Valley 100 years ago have been hoping for 100 years that they would be able to somehow get value from their investment. Right now, we have said, with these particular things, with these particular practices, you can't get value from your investment. You have to come up with a better means of getting value from your investment that maintains the integrity of our investment in the surface rights. 2,000 acre feet of water, that's a lot of water. Guess what? If we improve the effective water cycle on our rangelands, there's a million acres in this county of rangeland. We can improve by 2,000 acre feet of water through management of ecosystem processes. You don't have to have cyclic steam injection and depend on oil companies to give us a few more gallons of water for their oil. $1.8 million has been spent on this, in this county, to tell us that our measure goes too far. Is it too far to go to defend our groundwater? Is it too far to go to defend our right to have a beautiful tourism economy?
Mr. Morris, you're about a minute over, right?
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to keep everybody on.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Sir, come on up. Sorry we missed you. We don't have a lot of people here all the time like this.
My name is Stephen Shear, Dr. Shear. I'm sorry I didn't get dressed up for the occasion. I literally walked out of the emergency department at Hazel Hawkins and came here. So I just finished a shift. So I'm here to speak for Measure J, and I want to talk to the people that are against Measure J, because for those of you that have decided to vote for it, great, thank you. But I will trade conservative credentials with anybody in this room. I may not beat you, but I'll match you. I'm a 10-year Army veteran. I just stepped back from being the chief of the emergency department at VA in Palo Alto, and I'm an emergency medicine physician. So I deal with risk decisions every minute... So, I deal with risk decisions every minute that I work. I make high-risk decisions all the time. So, I want to ask the people in Measure J, okay, I get it, you don't want the government in your business, I get it.
You're addressing the council, sir.
But I'm also addressing you guys.
They can hear you. They can hear you.
So, I'm, I make, what I'm, what I would like to say is, is that, let's say we have all our, you know, you have your, Measure J folks have their experts, and the other side has their own experts, and we can, all the experts disagree. Then I have to point out to you, then what is all these cases that are hundreds of cases throughout this nation that have gone and been settled for amounts that are variable, but there's one thing that's always the case, that's always true for each settled case, is there's always a clause for silence. And the people that settle to get their money back from their polluted groundwater is that they buy their silence, and they don't speak up. And so, these are people that made decisions to frac their land and then contaminated their water in order to get their money back out of their property. They had to sign something that said, "I will be quiet. I will not tell you what I got for my land and for my settlement." And by the way, their land is useless because their groundwater is contaminated. So, I ask you, and I'm a risk taker, I ask you, is it worth the risk? If we take, if we take the oil companies' statistics, 6% of all these fracking wells fail right off in the first year. That's their statistics, not ours, theirs. So, let's just take their statistics. This is their data. Would you want to take a 6% chance that you, your children, and your grandchildren will no longer live in San Bernardino County because your water aquifer is spoiled and destroyed? I take risks every day. I don't think that's a risk we're taking here. And I think you guys, and I don't care if threats of lawyers or whatever, you need to do the right thing. You need to say, "No, that's not a risk that is we're taking." And the citizens of this county are speaking very loudly to you and saying, "We don't think that's a risk we're taking." So, I think you should vote against fracking.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? I'm going to, anybody else who'd like to speak before I close it and bring it back to the council? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back for the council for discussion. Who wants to go? Joelyne, anybody?
Well, I'll, I'll start it. I have to agree with the last speaker. I just can't see the risk involved. I mean, the oil companies can tell you, "Oh, no, everything's going to be fine," and it may be, but why take the chance? Why, do we need it? And that's just my opinion. I just, I can't see putting our water at risk.
Uh, Joelyne?
I'll go further. I'll agree with the last two speakers, who, I mean, we had a lot of good speakers on both sides, but the last two speakers made some of the best points. And one of them I kind of take to heart because he said, "Do we really want to not vote for something that we think is right because we're afraid of a lawsuit?" And I think the answer is, we don't, we, we should vote yes on Measure J if that's what we believe is the correct thing to do.
Rick.
I wish I had the materials we got tonight sooner. I don't know why they're coming at the last minute. This has been on the agenda for a while. But, you know, in looking through the stuff that we did get earlier, this, this King City ordinance says, "Whereas there is no currently proposed hydraulic fracturing in the San Ardo oil field," and someplace else here, I've got too many pieces of paper up here, was a comment that fracturing is not used now nor is not proposed in San Bernardino County. Well, I mean, that's a, that's not a promise, that's not a guarantee, that's nothing. So, it's not. The thing is, the minute that cyclic steam injection or whatever it is and these other methods fail to produce the oil that is still down there, they'll go to fracturing. They don't want to ban it because they want, that's the ace in the hole. The whole thing is, you know, when, when you look at issues like this, and, and, you know, the people on one side are retired teachers and everyday people like us, and the people on the other side are the oil companies with $1.9 million to put into a county of 55,000 people. You know, really? So, I'm sorry, I, you know, everything that, that the speaker said tonight was very impressive, but nobody's putting it all together and coming up with unbiased opinions. You know, the EPA and all these other agencies, I have no faith in the, the CDC had to go out and hire an Ebola czar because they're charged with, with controlling diseases, and yet they can't handle Ebola without a czar. The CPUC is charged with, with overseeing PG&E, and look at what's going on up there. You know, we have all these government entities that are, that are charged with regulating something, and they get in bed with the people they're supposed to regulate and don't regulate anything at all. So, I'm even suspicious of, what is it, DOGGR or whatever it is. But, I'm sorry, oh, yeah, the IRS. No, they might audit me. So, you know, I, you know, the, the arguments tonight were very impressive, but I've got to go back to, you know, where's the money in this thing? And, and the bottom line here is that the oil companies are opposed to Measure J, not because of what it is going to do to anybody's property rights other than theirs, it's because they stand to make a lot of money if, if it doesn't pass. And, you know, Measure J allows standard well drilling to continue, except in the areas right around the city of Hollister and the city of San Juan. But all out in the, in the county that's not close to the cities, it can continue. What Measure J is going after is the fracturing and the enhanced methods. And, and I think there's a lot of evidence, if you read all the materials that have been coming out ever since this got going. There's a lot of evidence that something is going on. I don't know, I don't ever recall earthquakes going on in Oklahoma. And look at all the earthquakes they've had, and they've been doing fracturing. So, that's my piece.
Yeah, I, I look at it and I, you know, it's, it's just another measure that was written bad. They didn't isolate, they just kind of threw it all, all together to ban, you know, anything and everything. I think if it was rewritten different to where everybody could benefit, there, there probably would not be an issue with this. There's a lot of concerns on how much the county and the area is going to lose. There's a lot of concerns in, you know, what, what the outcome could be. I don't want to see anything future, you know, that's going to, you know, ruin the county or the land or even surrounding areas around it. You know, it's just, it's a real tough decision in these areas.
You know, Marjorie, I had a question. You know, a year, 14, 15 months ago, Supervisor Bertolo and Munzer commenced and put an ordinance together, and I'm surprised that we're here now. What broke down, I know they went on for days and put hours in, and I'm like, we're, why are we, how did we ever get to this point with the Measure J people? I, I don't, I'm trying to, I figured, hey, great, solved. You know, a year later, you know, we're, you know, this is the controversy of the county.
How did it get so extreme?
Yeah, I, I, how did we go from everything being, you know?
I am as surprised about that as you are. We worked over eight months on that ordinance.
Yeah.
With the ad hoc committee and with inviting the folks that really wanted to make sure that the wording was in such a way that it would protect our groundwater, it would protect the land, it would protect the environment. And, you know, it's funny because they, when they came to our board meeting, we were applauded for having done and prepared a really good ordinance that did just that. And so, I thought we had, we had done it right, and I really still feel that we did it right. And even SB4 that Christina was talking about, I mean, we have regulations in the state of California that are, we haven't even, you know, really given them an opportunity to prove themselves, and they're strict. They're really going to regulate even stricter regulations than we have as of January the 14th, 2014.
So, just to give you a point, SB4 is basically supersedes, I mean, they're, they're it, I mean, you know, they, they carry the heavy hammer.
They do, and they actually.
So, I mean, that's what I'm, you know, I'm, like I said, it started, no, hold on. But, well, hey, I, well, hold on, hey, I'm just asking, okay? But the SB4 is, you know, is, is the, you know, the ballot pope that says, "Hey, you're not going to do this, you're going to do that."
Yes, very, very strict, and like, like Christina said, both, you know, parties voted, supported it because it is probably one of the harshest regulations that we have ever seen in the state of California. Not that they were not harsh before, but what they have done is they have hired more personnel to make sure that there is no flaw in, I mean, I'm not saying that it cannot, accidents can happen, but they haven't happened because we have such strict, strict regulations in California, and this is going to be even stricter. And they, you know, they, they came over and made a presentation, Dogger did, to the county and presented what they, you know, the regulations that they have. So, there was no question in my mind that we have protected the county with our ordinance. The state is protecting the state of California with their SB4. So, I am as perplexed as you are.
Well, I look at, you know, I'll tell people, I'm a conservative, and, and, but I, I know Alejo from Watsonville. But if this guy's on, I, I mean, I'm thinking, he's the guy that, these people, you know, Measure J people want in their corner. But I, I'm perplexed, and it's like it's coming, you know, full circle. My next question is, and I was going to call Jeff Catano today, but, you know, time, what's the stance of the county water district? They're the ones that issue wells. I mean, have they come out either way? Maybe you can, I don't know.
What they have said is that there has never been any water contamination. They, they regulate our water, our groundwater very, very carefully. It's tested regularly by strict standards that come down by the state of California, and there has never been any water contamination that we can say that the oil extraction has, has caused.
Okay. I know, Andy, I'll, you have something to say? I don't want to.
Yeah, I just want to say something about SB4.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Frank Pavly was asked specifically whether SB4 would preempt any local, further local action, and the answer was no. It does not preempt further local action. So, that's, you know, that's, that's one issue. On the other issue of the negotiations of the county ordinance, the group that was involved in the negotiations, Ace, Aromas Cares For Its Environment, has endorsed our initiative. So, they, they were not, you know, they were happy to have been done. I've been a negotiator myself. They were happy to have been done with the process. But throughout the process, early on, Monat, the law firm from the oil industry, threatened to sue the county if they were not happy with what came out of those negotiations. So, this is not the first threat of suit during this process. So, you know, I just wanted to answer those two questions.
Okay, thanks. You know, this is a tough one. I, I'm at the, you know, I would never want anything to happen to our waterways, but I look at it, this is my way of looking at it, is that if every state, county, city, it's not my backyard, hypothetically, I know it never happened, then where do we get our energy from? I, I mean, I want it to be safe, and I want to keep, have the proper people to be on, you know, looking out, but, hey, no, you do it in Monterey County or Kern County, I mean, that's what, you know, it's like, that's what worries me. I mean, you're going to get, you know, people are going to start, we're going to start locking up areas, and all of a sudden, where are we getting oil from? People are cutting our heads off.
Andy, they're not asking to ban oil drilling. They're asking to ban certain extraction methods.
Well, Joelyne, let me finish. I think that this thing, my, is not, wasn't well-written. I think people don't read it. I didn't start digging into this thing until three or four weeks ago. You know, "Oh, they're going to frac." You know, I, I, you know, I, I cannot support it, you know, but, you know, that's just my opinion. If it comes to a vote, you know, that's how I feel. So.
I got to tell you one more thing. I have to agree with Rick. If you really think that the state of California, you can trust them to enforce SB4, and you really think that the county of San Bernardino is going to hire people and pay money to go out and inspect these wells, then I don't have a bridge to settle anymore, but I'll sell you some beachfront property right here in San Juan because that's the thing that gets me. I mean, come on, you guys, look at the state of California, you know? Some guy wants to build a $90 billion train from LA to San Francisco, and, and we're just sitting around saying, "Oh, yeah, that's a good idea." Well, it's the same thing with SB4. Yeah, it's a good idea, but how are you going to enforce it? They don't have the people to do it. They don't have the experts to do it.
And, Pavly, I'm sorry, you know, I know you want to, is there any other comment from council, because I'm going to.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we support the yes on, on banning fracking, yes on J.
Okay, I have a second. Rick has a second. Okay, any further discussion? Call for a roll call bill.
Councilmember Bach?
Aye.
Councilmember Edg?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazio?
Aye.
Council Vice Mayor Lynn?
Nay.
Mayor Moore?
No. Three to two, the yes passed. Thank you for being real cooperative. Thank you.